Good evening, Mr. Schnell, I'm gonna bring you on real quick, just to clarify something. Mr. Schnell, Ustream is down. Ms. Fiegans is telling us that we should be able to record to the computer and upload it later. Do you foresee any problem with us proceeding?
No, sir, I do not, because I see the recording light on the Zoom, so I assume that the Zoom recording is working. If it's possible for Mr. McCormick to find a backup, even a handheld recorder, that would probably be best. But the Zoom shows recording, the red light is on for recording on the Zoom.
Okay, on that note, we will proceed. We're gonna call the Castle Hills City Council meeting to order and determine if a quorum is present. We have a quorum present. Go ahead and start with the invocation, Mr. Rappley. Do we have anybody signed up for the invocation?
We do not have anyone here for the invocation.
Okay, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Chief Siemens, will you lead us? Thank you, chief. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, first up, we have the citizens to be heard. We don't have a huge crowd here, but I don't think we have anybody signed up. First up is a consent agenda. The consent agendas are self-explanatory. We have the approval of the city council minutes, approval of the financial report, and the quarterly investment report.
Mayor, I'd move approval.
Motion by Mr. Isbrand.
Second.
Second by Mr. May. Mr. Paul, can you use your mic?
I have a question about the financial or comment, but it won't affect anything to make any changes, if I may.
I imagine now's a good time.
I was going over the report, and to me, it was very positive, if I'm reading it correctly, and Laura's here to answer me, that through April, April was supposed to be the real bad month around the country, and it was, but through April, our numbers look good for the sales tax revenue, and I think that's very positive. In fact, we're a little ahead, I think it was, my memory serves me correctly, about 60% of the budget had already come in through April, and you're two-thirds of the year, so it should be around 66%, so I think we're doing pretty close to what the budget is. Am I correct on that? Okay.
Mr. Paul, can we discuss this a little bit later when we get to the financials?
Sure, I thought that's what we were approving the report. We can do it later then, okay.
Okay. We have a first by Mr. Isbrand, a second by Mr. May, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you, council. First item, business discussion of possible action on the extension of the Fifth Declaration of a Local State of Disaster and Public Health Emergency executed by Mayor J.R. Trevino. I'm sure you all used to seeing this by now. Basically, this is us continuing to go forward, given the fact that we're still in the pandemic and showing that we still have the issue that we're dealing with as a city, incurring expenses and trying to keep track of those, so we can potentially get reimbursement. Any questions for Mr. Schnell? Mr. Gregory?
On this reimbursement we talk about, is this, are we gonna wait until what period of time to present everything? Or are we presenting reimbursements every month as we go along?
I don't know about that specifically. Let's see if Mr. Schnell has an answer for us on that.
I can give a quick answer to Mr. Gregory's question, but it's not on the agenda to really discuss the timing or methodology of reimbursement. There will be an agenda item at the special meeting on June 17th that will address the whole reimbursement question directly. What I can say right now to respond to Mr. Gregory is that the Bear County has initiated an interlocal grant agreement, and it's been presented, I believe, to all of the suburban cities. It calls for a maximum reimbursement of $55 per resident, based upon the 2018 census, for expenditures between sometime in March and September 30 of this year. It's a 12- or 18-page agreement, when you add in the exhibits, and a copy will be circulated to the governing body as part of the package for the meeting next week. And I think that'll be the best way for the council, Mr. Gregory, and the other members of the council, to have an understanding about the procedure that we'll have to follow for this reimbursement. There may be other reimbursements, but this is the main one that we're aware of at this time. As to the Fifth Declaration of a Local State of Disaster, this is a new declaration. I know the packet had an older declaration. The key point in this declaration is that it incorporates Executive Order GA 26, which was issued by Governor Abbott last week, as well as the most recent Executive Order of County Judge Wolf, so that we don't have to continually have the mayor sign a new declaration. I do think it is important, even with the county's effort to do this interlocal grant agreement, to have a continuing state of disaster resolution until, you know, higher authorities, medical and other, tell us that we're in better shape.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. Mr. Joyce?
Quick question, if I may. Mr. Schnell mentioned that we're keeping up with the governor's executive orders, and I wonder if that includes item 11 on the mayor's declaration here, which talks about violations. I don't think we're, I don't think the governor is allowing fines for violations. Is that true, Mr. Schnell?
I believe the governor has prohibited jail time for violations. I do not believe the governor has prohibited fines. That provision in the mayor's declaration was a function of an early concern that Chief Siemens had expressed, because there was a concern when this, we were in the early stages of the pandemic, that some businesses were not following the rules, and the chief felt that there should be a clear statement about enforcement. But I don't believe GA 26, which I do have in another room, and I'm glad, while you continue to discuss other matters, I'll pull GA 26. I don't think it prohibits fines. It does prohibit jail time, however.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Isbrand?
Mayor, I'd move adoption of the extension of the Fifth Declaration of a Local State of Disaster and Public Health Emergency executed by Mayor J.R. Trevino.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. Paul, a second. Any further discussion?
Mayor, you might want to ask Mr. when we want to take this matter up, as far as how long the declaration or when we need to take it up at another council meeting?
Mr. Schnell, I think you alluded to the next council meeting, correct?
I think that would be appropriate. Today is June 9th, your July meeting is, regular meeting is July 14th. I think it'd probably be good to have this continued, at least until the July 14th council meeting, or until the mayor rescinds the order.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. Okay, no further discussion, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you, council. Proceed to item number two, discussion of possible action to accept the FY 2021 budget calendar.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Right now, this is the proposed budget calendar for moving forward for the 2021 budget. How we've done this here is, we've put together two special meetings in late July, similar to what we did last year, for the departments to go over their budgets and their departments, and then we've layered in a third budget workshop, if necessary, which will involve presenting the budget. And then the calendar is followed, we've layered in, sorry, we layered in a special meeting further down, if we need it, on Tuesday, 25th of August, and then the proposed council meeting on Tuesday, September 15th, where we'd adopt the budget and levy the tax rate. We will only have one budget hearing, just like we did last year, as far as this budget process. I'm open to questions that council might have on timeframe, are any dates that might be an issue? Oh.
I just, I have one question. I want to make sure that we have a substantial buffer, so that if we get to the situation like we had last year, that we have a fallback time.
So we did allow that. If we do adopt the budget on Tuesday, September 15th, there's still about two weeks left till the end of the month where we adopt the budget.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rappley. Any further questions, council?
And just so we're clear, we'll also on this, June 17th, have an agenda item discussing whether council wants to have a preliminary meeting on this budget, maybe a workshop of sort. But we'll open it up to council next Wednesday on that one.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the new proposed budget calendar.
We have a motion of Mr. Joyce, second by Mr. May. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Discussion and possible action to approve Resolution 2020-06-09, authorizing participation in text pool, investment pools, and designate authorized representatives, Ms. Fiegans.
Evening, mayor, council, citizens. Textpool is a, just another portal for us to have our money, and we have text class, excuse me, Texas class currently. Textpool's the same, and then text R, which is your next agenda item. In order to join into those, we have to go through the resolutions. So we're just doing this, we have ability to put money in other places besides just our depository. And CDs, when we get to that point, we'll be doing some CDs probably in the future, if rates get a little bit better.
Right now, to expand on that, council, the idea is that we have a large portion of our dollars in one bank, and we want to be able to diversify that, try to grow some interest, and as Ms. Fiegans said, eventually you look to do a CD or two with the assistance of our treasurer on council.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Thank you, Ms. Fiegans. Any questions? Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council adopt Resolution 2020-06-09-A, as stated.
If you can, at the very second page, authorizing Douglas and myself as the representatives.
And as stated.
Sorry, they get picky.
Thank you, Mr. May. We have a second? Second by Mr. Gregory. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Item number four, discussion of possible action to approve Resolution 2020-06-09-B, authorizing participation in Texas Short Term Asset Reserve Program, and designate authorized representatives. Ms. Fiegans?
Exactly, it's the same one before, it's just another place for us to invest our money, so especially at this time, we'd already, we're gonna be doing this, but now with the COVID and being able to move money around easily, if need be.
Thank you, Ms. Fiegans. Mr. Rappley, any comments?
No, just as Ms. Fiegans said, right now, we're not drawing interest on any of our funds, and we need to be growing some money in that standpoint.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Council, Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I propose that we accept, the city council will accept Resolution Number 2020-06-09-A, as stated.
Dash B?
B.
A B.
Okay. Are you still good with that, second, Mr. Gregory? Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, council. Item number five, discussion of possible action to approve Resolution 2020-06-09-C, for renewal of a contract with, for collection of delinquent tax services on a contingency basis with Linebarger, Goggan, Blair, and Sampson LLP. Mr. Rappley?
Mayor, thank you. This is for a renewal of a contract with this firm for collection of our delinquent taxes. I think they've been on with the City Castle Hill since 2011, and this is an option to renew for three years, to continue with their services. We have Ronald Rocha here, he's a partner with the firm. If you have any specific questions about what they do or anything related to the contract.
Mr. Rocha, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Every year, we give a report, we deliver it down to you guys. We're at 99.2% collections, that small percentage. Are those that are, majority are tax deferrals over 65 disability, 61% of the tax roll for the 2018 impaired taxes is under the tax defer over 65.
Mr. Paul, can you use your microphone?
But since nobody's around you, could you hold the mask so we can hear a little, I can hear a little better? There you go, thank you.
Keeping it on, I forgot about it. Excuse me. So majority of the tax roll for the 2018 impairs is a majority of, about 61% is the over 65 tax deferrals. We don't go after those. Those are left uncollected until the parties are deceased, and then goes over to the heirs to take care of anything that is left, that's a small percentage. We do file the litigation if need be. If not litigation, they get a payment contract, or sometimes they, a lot of individuals don't understand, they can qualify for home sit exemption or even a tax defer over 65, and we get that information out to them and get them with a proper appraisal of district deferrals also. I'm also resident of Castle Hills.
Thank you, Mr. Rocha. Do we have any other questions, council? Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I propose that the city council approve Resolution 2020-06-09-C, as stated.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Gregory. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, council.
Thank you.
Mr. Rocha, thank you. Okay, moving on to item number six, discussion of possible action on ordinance 2020-06-09, adding Section 2-225, capital assets to Division 1 of Article 6 of Chapter 2 of the Code of Ordinances, adopting and accepting the City of Castle Hills capital asset policy and procedures as attached in Exhibit A. Ms. Fiegans?
Yes, good evening. And this is a policy, again, that we're going, we're asking to have added to your code of ordinances, in addition to a policy. So, Jen, and I'm gonna briefly, just real quick, kind of run through some of my notes, and then if you have questions. General Accepted Accounting Practices GA requires capital assets to be properly accounted through all components of the process, from acquisition to disposition, and the best way of this is a written policy. Written policy ensures that council citizens have an expectation that city staff are maintaining and safeguarding assets. With the form of policy, it ensures all departments are following the same protocol in regards to assets. Policy also allows for better inventory control over these types of purchases. It's also the first step in capital asset management that later can assist in establishing appropriate plans for capital maintenance and replacement during the budget process. So, I have some other stuff, but I'm gonna see if anybody has any questions, and then.
Mr. May?
I have one question. This would also help us in our audits, our annual audits, is that correct?
Yes, and I, yeah. So I can, so also, I'll briefly read this, just that I wrote. "Policy also ensures capital assets are recorded properly in the financial statements at year-end, as required by GASB or Governmental Accounting Standards Board. Since this affects the financial statements, it's highly recommended to have a written policy." This is typically approved by council, and if there's not a policy, there is no threshold, though this policy gives us a threshold. So basically, anything that was considered had a useful life of year would have to be capitalized. Although, in the past, you have in your financial statements, it's been in your financial statements for many years, prior to your current auditors even, of $1,000. So anything that has useful life over a year, that's over $1,000, is supposed to be capitalized. Kind of a small amount, this policy that I have put together is 5,000, which is a typical threshold for this size city. We have infrastructure at 15,000, you know, so for capitalization purposes, which is the financial statements, anything that's 5,000 would be in your financial statements. This policy also breaks up non-capital and capital, defines almost two, so that non-capital would be anything that's a life over a year, but is under that capitalization threshold of 5,000, so that we can keep track internally, gives us another way to keep track. It doesn't go again to the financial statements, the auditors don't depreciate it, because they handle that piece. So, yeah, so this, and it helps with the audit, again, makes it smoother, and that's in the future. What I've done, by separating the non-capital and capital, we would also see that in the budget as two different line items, so that you would have, when you're doing your budget process, these items that they need to buy, whether it's a chainsaw or maybe it's something the police department needs, some kind of equipment that would be broken up, and it just helps for the budget process as well. When the auditors go through, they quickly determine what needs to be capitalized.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Fiegans. Mr. Paul?
So you're saying, prior to this, they've just all been lumped into a general fund or a general account?
No, well.
Are we just doing the same thing, but now we have a policy?
You, a couple of things. You didn't have a written policy that we could find, other than in your financial, at the year-end, your financial statements, there is a required statement, and it shows that your policy was $1,000. So, again, that may have been 15 years ago, there might have been a written policy that didn't get codified and didn't get, it's possible, or that was just what someone decided, and it just became part of your financial statements. So this is just to help simplify and then also clarify that we're gonna do 5,000, and also to help the departments, because we included a form, that any time they purchase each kind of assets, we have to fill out the form, give it a tag, then when they dispose of them, we're gonna go through the process of, we're gonna just let them, you know, destroy it, if it needs to be destroyed, if it's gonna be auctioned off, so that we can also remove them at a timely manner, because if you can imagine $1,000, when the auditors gave me the list, it's huge, long list of items that you should never have been on there in the first place, the reality of it is. And now we gotta try to remove all of them. We moved some this year that just don't exist anymore, because they've been on there for 15 years. So, this is to help all of that.
Basically, Mr. Paul, the way to track and account for our assets, it hasn't been done before.
Well, that, it's been done, it's just not been, yeah, it's just not been clean. It's been done.
Well, that kind of reaches to my question, is how much of an effort is it gonna take to catch up to the new system with all of the city owns? Is that a big deal? Obviously, you guys are comfortable with it, because you're recommending it, but isn't it gonna take a bit of an effort to sort of catch up with all of the city owns?
No, because, no, because there is, it has been, like I said, there's a huge list of everything that the auditors over years put into the list.
So you're just building, you're just starting with new stuff.
So this will be from the future, and we, we may go find some things that aren't in the list, and then we started working on that with public works and the fire and police, actually, through the insurance as well, I'm kind of coordinating with this item. So it'll be from the future, more than anything, and clearly, unless we just find something glaringly not on the current list. But there is, there is a list, the auditors do prepare it.
Okay, okay.
Which this will help too, the auditors will prepare that entire list. I'll be giving it to them with those amounts on there, and they'll confirm that they're on there.
Very good, thank you.
And Mayor, I just want to let you know, we did sit down with Councilman Gregory on this to review before bringing it to council.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. Gregory?
Cities have been required for a long time to have a listing of all their capital assets, anyway. We've always had that, this is just clarifies this. I would like to go to page five. Underestimated useful lives for depreciation are as follows. Is this in accordance with the IRS?
This is according to governmental standards.
Government fund.
Yes. Well, and I say that, I use several cities, and this is, because we don't report for the IRS purposes, but when you look at the governmental standards and they're, these are within that range.
Under number nine, capital asset recording on acquisition, I just need to know when, this is, asset form A shall be completed for each acquisition of capital and non-capital assets. Blah, 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 blah. When are the forms to be completed? How soon after the acquisition?
As soon as they, when they purchase it, as soon as they purchase it. I believe it says it on there, let me make sure.
Departments are required to notify the finance department when asset is removed from service for any reason.
So the first one for purchasing under responsibility, which is on page five, the department director must notify finance department that a capital asset has been purchased, so they can issue a tag identification with number, so it doesn't say immediately, but in theory, as soon as they purchase it, they should get with us.
The understanding is? The intent is, the original intent of what we're passing is?
It's as soon as possible, yeah. And this will help us, again, when we go through the budget process and create those two new line items. When I'm reviewing financial statements and the accounts payable are being entered, if those line items are hit, we know that we should be seeing an asset form turned into us and can work with them if those line items are being utilized.
Any further questions, council? Unintended motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. May?
I propose that the city council pass ordinance Number 2020-06-09-A, as stated.
Second the motion.
Just to confirm, you mean dash 09?
Zero nine.
Zero nine.
Okay.
Well, they have 09 here, and it's 09, and it's just 09 here, but it's 09A here.
I think we dropped an ordinance off.
It's not A, it's 2020-06-09.
Yeah, we originally had more than one ordinance on agenda, now we don't.
I retract the extra A.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. May and Mr. Gregory. I'm assuming you're okay with that? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
If you look at the caption and the agenda, it's not on there.
Gotcha. Item number seven, discussion of possible action on modification of the 2020 city holiday schedule regarding the Battle of Flowers Parade city holiday. Mr. Rappley?
Mayor, I just want to bring this forward to city council and get approval. Originally, we had a city holiday for April 24th, which was Battle of Flowers Parade. Obviously, that didn't happen, because Fiesta got moved, and we operated normal as business, everybody worked that day. Ideally, you know, with some of the things with COVID and maybe the possibility, uncertainty of not having Fiesta later this year, I think it's been rescheduled to November 13th. We already have three city holidays in November, and so what I am proposing is to give the employees an option in lieu of an additional floating holiday instead of the Battle of Flowers Parade, so they can use that anytime for the rest of the year, or even Christmas Eve, from that standpoint. So I just want to bring it in front of council to get y'all's approval on that.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Do we have any questions?
So just to clarify, this isn't an additional holiday, it's in lieu of?
Thank you. Mr. Paul?
Do we, first of all, do we need a motion before?
Whichever way you want to do it.
Well, the question, the question I had is, I understand what you're doing, how do you determine that we don't want all the public works people leaving the same day? Or the police to take off, I mean, how are you going to, you need to be prepared to adjust for that type of situations, all I'm saying.
Understood, and again, this is, every employee has a floating holiday use for any type of day they would like to use, and And again, this is, can be used of any day the rest of the year. So it's not, I'd assume hopefully that it's not all be taken on one day, but it does allow that possibility for an employee to use Christmas Eve as this floating holiday moving forward.
Mr. Isbrand.
Mayor, I'd move approval of the modification of the twenty twenty city holiday schedule in regards to the Battle of Flowers Parade City Holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce, for the second. Any further discussion? Mr. Gregory.
Mr. Rappley, will you still retain the authority to veto a date that somebody or a multitude of people may want to take? For the example of everybody in public works decides to leave, or all of lease decide they want a holiday one day, do you retain the right to say, no, you can only have certain numbers of people, or?
I would, I would suggest and hope that our department directors would come to me to discuss anybody who's taken a holiday on a certain day that might impact another holiday, like say, Christmas Eve. So we can plan accordingly. That's gonna be up to Mr. Harada and Chief Siemens to determine. They can make that call from an operational standpoint, but definitely if I have to get involved to make sure that we have coverage for that day. But I hate to say that, I mean, I don't think we're gonna have any issues moving forward. This is allowing any employee to take any one day in lieu of. But if there are operational issues, I would think Mr. Harada and Chief Siemens would get with me if there was any issues with service or problems like in public works per se.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Councilman, I don't see it as an issue.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Item number eight, discussion of possible action on the right of a business in the city of Castle Hills to require customers to wear facial masks due to health and safety concerns. Mr. Gregory?
We go last Sunday, I went over to HEB with a friend. I did not have my mask, so I did not go in. But friend went in there and related a situation, that there was a young couple in there without a mask, coughing, wheezing, drooling, stuff coming out of the nose, putting it all over his face, and then he goes to the fruit and vegetable stands and went through them and touched everything in sight. I went to the GM, when I got home, I called the GM, and she said, well, we don't have, now that the governor says we don't have to ask for masks, we can't ask people to do this. We're stuck. And I said, would you like a local resolution, legal resolution from your local city that gives you that right? She said, please do, it would help us a great deal. On top of this, the WHO has come out and said just in the last twenty-four hours, everybody should always wear a mask everywhere. Now, they seem to be seeing something that I don't know, I don't see, but they see it. So anyway, I strongly urge the passing of this, so that our, at least our local HEB will be given the authority to require everybody to come in that sort of wear a mask.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Mr. Isbrand.
For a discussion here, and thank you, Mr. Gregory, for bringing this forward. I appreciate the fact that you're doing that. I guess I'm not confused about what you're saying, but I know as an example, when I go to Costco, that they require everyone to wear a mask. So it is my assumption that the business community has the prerogative to do so.
And that may give them the right to do something that others don't.
Yeah, I don't know, that's why.
I didn't know. I asked her that too.
I'm gonna go ahead and get Mr. Schnell on here. Maybe he can shed some light on the situation.
Well, I wish I were wearing my mask, mayor. The basic comments that I'm gonna make, I want to preface by saying that I strongly support wearing masks. I strongly support people accessing meetings like this by video conference in the, in the light of public safety and public health concerns. Governor Abbott's order GA twenty-six says in part, individuals are encouraged to wear appropriate face coverings, but no jurisdiction can impose a civil or criminal penalty for failure to wear a face covering. The governor has taken the position, not only in GA twenty-six, but in other of his executive orders. He has chosen not to require the wearing of face masks. The mayor's declaration number five, which y'all just acted on, I believe we did put in there a statement about strongly encouraging the wearing of cloth face coverings. HEB, I believe, has made a company decision to no longer require all customers to wear face masks. I believe that the wording of this agenda item, the right of a business in the city of Castle Hills to require customers to wear facial masks due to health and safety concerns would allow the city council to do just that, but not more than that. So the council could pass a resolution saying that it is, it is resolved by the city council, the city of Castle Hills, that a business in the city of Castle Hills has the right to require customers to wear facial masks due to health and safety concerns. That is not the same as telling a business, you must require your customers to wear facial masks. I think that we would be running close to the edge on the governor's order. If we were to go beyond just confirming to businesses that the city council feels that the business does have the right to require its customers to wear facial masks.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell.
May I ask, Mr. Gregory, do you have a motion?
Mr. Gregory, can you use your microphone?
I move that the city of Castle Hills has determined due to health and safety concerns that the businesses within the city can require customers to wear facial masks when they're inside their stores.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Do we have any further discussion? First of all, I just want to get a clarification from Mr. Schnell that that is in line, and we're not gonna be pushing the line as you mentioned.
I think that is, is okay, mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. Mr. Paul?
If I heard the motion correctly, we're saying that the businesses, if they choose, can we require their customers to wear masks? Aren't we there already?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, aren't we there already by the government? So the question would be, if the governor's already set that in motion, we already have that motion. HEB chose not to do it. They can turn around and choose to go back to it if they choose. So why are we doing this?
Mr. Schnell, it's my understanding that a private business can set their standards to wear a mask or not wear a mask. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And I, you know, Mr. Paul's question and comment is, is correct. Except that I think the purpose of Mr. Gregory's motion and his asking this be on the agenda was perhaps articulated best when he gave his opening comments when this agenda item was open. The city doesn't have to do this, but if it would help a business have a higher level of comfort in protecting the health and safety of everyone in their business, then I don't think it's a problem for the city to do it. Unlike a private business, the city can't do that. Essentially, because if it did, it would be something that could not be enforced with any kind of penalty at all. So cities have backed away, I think even Bear County and San Antonio have backed away from the mandatory wearing of a face mask. But the city council can certainly let local businesses know that the city council believes that the wearing of face masks and the requirement for customers to wear face mask is something that a, a local business can, can ask and require.
Thank you, Mrs. Schnell. Mr. Paul?
Would it be more appropriate then to just do a resolution to say that the city council encourages local businesses to have their customers wear masks? Because again, anything other than that, the governor's already taken care of. And we can't do anything against what the governor has to say. Now, we got two lawyers here, so you know.
What the proposal is intent to doing is what the general manager of our local HEB wanted. She wanted to have some sort of resolution from the city of Castle Hills to tell her she has the right, if she so desires to do, to enforce a policy of no, nobody can go into their store without a mask. This does not apply.
He has that right already.
She does not have that right because she has said, HEB has said, all stores follow X. This gives this store the right to say, we have now the right through, only in Castle Hills, and the responsibility, if we so desire to exercise it, to require people who come in to wear a mask.
Mr. Schnell, can you confirm or deny that HEB has the ability already to require a mask? I'm.
I know it doesn't for a fact. The policy has stated that they do not have, they do not have the ability to go up and tell people to leave. They have the ability to tell people, please put on a mask and don't sneeze on the vegetables. That's it.
Mr. Schnell?
I don't, I don't know what HEB's corporate policy is or company policy. I know that for a period of time that recently ended, they were, there was a strong effort on the part of HEB to have customers wear masks. That policy was changed. And it's my understanding, there was an article in the Express News about this a couple of few days ago, that HEB was no longer going to require customers to wear face masks. I don't think the action of the city council of Castle Hills will change that corporate policy at any HEB store, even the one at West Avenue and Loop four ten. But if it is something that the general manager of the store thinks would help increase public safety, as in the need for same being exemplified by Mr. Gregory's introductory explanation, I don't see a problem with the council expressing its view that it's okay for a business to do this. Your, the mayor's declaration, which y'all just extended, has a long section about cloth face coverings that uses the words strongly encouraged. Because that's as far as the governmental body can go in terms of an enforceable. Cannot go to the must-wear face masks, because that's not something the governor is going to, it would not be consistent with the governor's orders. This is a little different from, from either the governor's statement or the mayor's statement. I think it's just something that would tell local businesses, you know, if you feel you need to do this, we think it's okay for you to do it. And I think that is something that the council can do in the interest of public safety. A lot of our, our citizens shop at that store at West Avenue and four ten.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. Mr. Isbrand.
Mayor and council, I don't particularly think that this motion breaks any new ground. In fact, it doesn't, because it is consistent with the executive orders from the governor and everything that is in effect. I think what it does do is demonstrate the seriousness by which the city council, the city of Castle Hills, believes people and businesses should exercise precautions. And if it gives a business the peace of mind to have the reassurance that the city of Castle Hills believes that they should have this right and reaffirms the right, then I think that's a good thing. The bottom line is this does no harm, so I don't know why there would be objection to simply reiterating our belief of the seriousness of the situation that we're in and supporting businesses and their right to conduct their business the way they wish to.
Sure. Mr. May.
I concur with that, and I just want it stated that to not make a statement is poor policy. This is in the form of a resolution. As long as it's not an ordinance or has a, some teeth to it that causes a person to be subject to a fine or jailing, we can't go wrong. So let me propose this. If, if there's a move afoot, I strongly support the resolution as stated. If you want to tack on the very end, the city council strongly encourages the wearing of masks. We could also do that too. But I think we, we have captured the sentiment in the stated resolution, and I'm in favor of it.
Mr. Joyce, any comments?
I'm comfortable with the resolution as stated.
Would you read it again, please, the way he stated?
Mr. Gregory, can you repeat that?
Could you read back what I said?
Ms. Craig, I'm sorry to bother you. Can you give us that statement as Mr. Gregory had read it? Yes, ma'am.
The motion by Mr. Gregory was that public businesses within the city of Castle Hills can require customers to wear masks, facial masks due to health and safety concerns.
Oh, for a vote.
Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Oh, all unanimous?
It's.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
He says the same thing the governor says, so.
Okay. Item number nine, discussion and possible action on appointments to the zoning commission. Mr. Isbrand, shall we start with you?
Yes, sir. So my appointee to the zoning commission would be John Herndon.
Now, Mr. Schnell, you have to remind me. Mr. Isbrand can make the, is it just a unilateral appointment, or do we need to confirm that?
I believe it is a unilateral appointment. I am looking right now for my copy of the ordinance as adopted last, at the last council meeting, but I believe that it was that each member of the governing body makes a direct appointment to the zoning commission. The mayor chooses among those five appointees, the chairman. The mayor appoints an alternate, and the council as a whole appoints an alternate. And I believe Mr. Rappley may be able to confirm that.
Mr. Rappley?
On the appointment?
Yes, sir.
Which one, I'm sorry?
That, it's a unilateral appointment for each council member, and that I would appoint the commissioner.
I think it's by, by council member, and then the mayor has the opportunity to select the alternate.
Okay, we'll go with that. So, Mr. Isbrand, you're appointing Mr. Herndon. Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. Paul?
Walter Bueller, he's an attorney, has experienced things that we need today.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Mayor, could you clarify? That's Walter Junior?
Junior?
Is that senior or junior?
Senior is William Bueller.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yes, Walter Bueller, I'm sorry.
You gotta know your constituents. Come on.
Mr. May?
I want to nominate Skip McCormick. Now, he's on the line. I just want to confirm. Say, say now, or, you know, don't protest later. Will you accept my nomination?
Let me unmute Mr. McCormick real quick.
And mayor, while you're doing that, it's important to let everyone who is named to any of these commissions understand that as, as the council has adopted the various ordinance. as, as the council has adopted the various ordinances in relation to composition of the board of adjustment, the architectural review committee and the zoning commission, a citizen can only be on one of those three bodies. I cannot recall at this time whether the same rule applies to the Parks Commission, but it does apply to the zoning commission, the board of adjustment and the architectural review committee. And it's important to, you know, let Mr. McCormick, remind Mr. McCormick and any other appointee of that information.
Thank you, Mr. Snell. Mr. McCormick, are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Do you accept Mr. May's appointment for the zoning commission?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Joyce?
I'd like to appoint Mr. Juan Solis.
Mr. Gregory? And just to confirm, I mean, I apologize, Mr. Juan Solis for Mr. Joyce's appointment?
Yes.
And Mr. Gregory was Charles Jackson. Okay. Okay, and so I just have to pick the, the chair, correct, Mr. Snell, and alternate?
Yes, sir.
You picked the chair mayor and one alternate and the council as a whole names the second alternate.
Okay. I would like to appoint Mr. Juan Solis as a chair. And I need to come back with an alternate and I hopefully I can do so at the next meeting. Do we have any names for the, another alternate? Mr. May?
I would propose David Lewis as an alternate.
Okay. Do we need a vote on that or is that just?
That needs a vote.
That needs a vote by council.
Okay. All in favor of Mr. Lewis? All opposed? Okay, the, the appointment fails. Mr. Paul? Yes, sir.
For an alternate, Todd Herman.
Okay. Todd Herman, all in favor? All opposed?
I'm abstaining.
Abstaining. So Mr. Herman will pass and with Mr. Gregory abstaining. Okay, I believe that is it. We can proceed to-
Who was the first, who was the first alternate?
The first alternate is, the first alternate selected by the- I'm going to come back with that next month. I apologize.
Yeah, because that's the first one. I thought we need another one.
Yeah, the, the second alternate will be Mr. Herman. Okay, item number 10, discussion and possible action on appointments to the architectural review committee. Mr. Isbrand?
Mr. Mayor, I would appoint Anna Freyas.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. That's Anna Freyas. Mr. Paul?
Yes, I'd like to appoint Moretha Scott.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Paul. Moretha Scott. Mr. May?
Kevin Chernis.
How do you spell that?
I believe it's C-H-E-R-N-I-S, maybe another S.
It's two S's.
Two S's. Kevin Chernis. Mr. Joyce?
I'd like to appoint Mr. Barry Middleman.
Okay. Mr. Barry Middleman for Mr. Joyce's place. And Mr. Gregory?
George Booth.
Okay, and George Booth for Mr. Gregory's. I would like to appoint Mr. Middleman as the chair.
And you get to select an alternate.
Yeah, I'm going to come back with the alternate next month for this as well. Council, do we have an at-large alternate? Mr. Joyce?
I have a suggestion, if I may. For a couple of years on the architecture review, I worked with a gentleman named David Kilgore. David is not a, a design professional, but he's a very, very smart guy. He's a technology guy by trade, but he also happens to be an attorney. So he's a very analytical fellow and I thought did a terrific job while I served with the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. All in favor of Mr. Kilgore? Unanimous. That's David Kilgore, correct, Mr. Joyce?
Right.
Okay, on to item number 11, discussion and possible action on appointments to the board of adjustments. Mr. Isbrand?
Mayor and council, I would appoint Matari Jones Gunter.
Okay, Matari Jones. Mr. Paul?
Yes, I appoint John Squire.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Paul. John Squire. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I appoint Justin Viegas.
Okay, Mr. May's appointment is Mr. Justin Viegas. Mr. Joyce?
I appoint Bruce Smiley Caleb.
Okay, Mr. Joyce's appointment is Mr. Caleb. Mr. Gregory?
Tom Aiken.
And Mr. Gregory's is Tom Aiken. From the commissioners, I'd like to appoint Mr. Smiley to be the chair. And I do have my alternate for this, Mr. Rick Lopez. Do we have another one from the group at large? We need to come back to this next month with the rest of mine?
I, I believe, Mayor, clarify with Mr. Snell, I think there's four alternates, I believe, to the BOA.
Mr. Snell, can you confirm that?
I do not have a copy of that ordinance in front of me right now. There may be extra alternates. The board of adjustment, unlike the other boards, has a higher quorum requirement and requires any action to be approved by at least four votes. So it is logical that there may be more than two alternates. And we can certainly get a clarification on that when this is brought back on the, for the council's consideration at the July 14th meeting.
Okay, I imagine that Mr. Rafferty can notify council in advance so we have time to bring forward a list of names. Is that correct? Mr. Snell?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And if I find out in the next few minutes, I will let you know.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand.
Yeah, and I would just say if that is the case, then the ordinance we passed on how we select the members of board of adjustment would need to be revised to reflect that because it wouldn't be correct to how we've established the composition of the body right now.
Thank you, sir. Okay, last but not least, discussion and possible action on appointments to the parks and project commission. Mr. Isbrand?
Mayor and council, I would appoint Ray Schultz.
Thank you.
S-C-H-U-L-T-Z, senior.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. Paul?
Yes, I would like to appoint John Squire. I think the group that started this whole process with him and some other people did a very good job and I'm sure they will continue.
Unfortunately, because of the wording of the ordinance, I'm pretty sure that the ARC ordinance does say that you, you cannot be on the ARC if you're on either the zoning commission or the board of adjustment. And Mr. Squire was Mr. Paul's appointment to the board of adjustment.
No, but we're talking about the-
The Parks Commission.
The Parks Commission, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we cleared that up in the beginning.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Paul, for appointing Mr. Squire. Mr. May?
I'd like to appoint Bonnie Hopkey to the parks.
Okay, appointing Bonnie Hopkey. Mr. Joyce?
I'd like to appoint Mr. Skip McCormick. Skip's kind of been the, the glue that's held that group together for a couple of years and a lot of energy and intelligence. I think he'd be a, a good member.
Thank you so much. Mr. Gregory? Okay.
What's, what's his name?
Tom Fentress for Mr. Gregory's position.
Fentress.
And Mr. Snell, was there be a, a chair for this and two alternates as well or how does that work?
Again, I don't have a copy of this ordinance. And this was done a while ago. And I would ask Mr. Rafferty if he has a copy of the ordinance the council adopted. It seemed like it was sometimes in, sometime in 2019. I think it was at the, the same meeting where the, I believe on Mr. McCormick's recommendation, the council sort of combined the, the, what was formerly called the projects committee with the parks committee. And we would have to look at that document for reference.
Thank you, Mr. Snell. I think Mr. Rafferty has something. Mr. Rafferty?
Yeah, the ordinance that, that combined the parks and project commission was established in February. It's in the back of your packet. I had it back there as a reference, which has that consisting of five members, one alternate who shall be resident in city council hills. Each alderman shall appoint one member whose place on the commission shall correspond to the place of the appointing alderman. The mayor shall appoint one alternate to the commission. There shall be no general vote on the city council on the appointments of members of the commission. The member, the mayor shall nominate and the council shall approve one alderman to serve as council liaison to the commission.
Thank you. Do we have any interest? Anybody serving as a council liaison? Mr. Joyce? You look a little reluctant.
No, no, it's, I'm not sure it's my place to recommend myself. That's the only reason.
I would recommend Mr. Joyce.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand, for recommending Mr. Joyce.
You appoint an alternate.
Okay, okay. All in favor of Mr. Joyce? You know, are you in favor of Mr. Joyce? Okay, unanimous.
May I ask for clarification then? On the alternate position, there's one alternate?
One alternate and said the mayor shall appoint one alternate to the commission.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I'd like to appoint Mr. Rick Lopez as an alternate. Believe that's it, correct? Mr. Rafferty, is that it?
I believe so, Mayor. I think we've covered them all. Just going back, well, you'll have your point. Alternate choices will have on the next agenda for July 14th. If not sooner, maybe on the special meetings.
Yes, sir.
And then we'll clarify in the BOA.
Thank you so much. Yes, sir. Okay. That is it. Announcements by mayor and council members. Mr. Isbrand?
Since we're on the subject, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all of the members of our committees, boards and commissions that serve honorably and tirelessly for our city. We couldn't do what we do without the dedicated work that they do. And most, if not all of them toil quietly and honestly and very focused on simply doing the task at hand to serve our community. I think they all deserve recognition for that effort, that commitment of time and that dedication to our city. And I'm confident y'all join me in thanking everyone who has served honorably on our boards, commissions and committees.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. Paul? Mr. May?
I just wanted to remind you that those that are interested in each one of these committees or commissions or boards, they can come and put in their thoughts because I know it's always appreciated. And some wanted to be nominated and unfortunately, they did not get the committees that they wanted. But I would just encourage those in the community that still have that desire, come to the meetings. They're posted on the website and I've dropped in a couple of times myself and it's always a refreshing experience.
Thank you so much, Mr. May. Mr. Joyce?
Mayor, I'd just like to follow on Mr. Isbrand's comment with a suggestion. Perhaps this should be an agenda item for a future meeting, but I think we probably need to have a more defined way of bringing folks on to these commissions and committees, welcoming them, providing them some sort of orientation. And then upon their leaving, a thanking though from yourself or as appropriate. But that, that's just going through my head and I think probably maybe next month we can bring that up as an actual item and, and vote on it.
I, I think an onboarding process is a great idea. Mr. Joyce?
Thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
When I was calling around to see who might want to be on these committees, I got a reaction from quite, from several people. They were concerned about people not wearing masks and serving on committees in which people don't wear a mask. And I think the council ought to consider, for liability's sake if nothing else, the requirement of these committees for people to wear a mask. Especially like the ad hoc committee, which is not a standing committee. You, there's some people who just, you know, they're either older, they may have heart problems, they may have diabetes, all sorts of things. But they were reluctant to be considered because the city has absolutely no policy. They said, we watched your zoning, your council committee and not everybody wears a mask there. And it's true. So I would hope without having a resolution, that the city manager at each of these meetings has a box of masks available if anybody needs one. Because there are people who do need these masks. And especially in light of WHO that came out in the last 24 hours and saying you absolutely should wear a mask at all times. They didn't qualify it at all. So I hope the city in these various meetings, we offer masks to people at every single meeting so they don't come and catch anything.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. And to that point, there is a reason why we offer Zoom meetings and will continue to do so for anybody that would like to attend or participate. We just want to make sure that we're doing whatever we can as a city to facilitate your involvement and make sure that you're safe. Other than that, I'd like to thank everybody for a quick and productive meeting. I would like to make a quick note to recognize that today has been one year since we had the tragic incident with officer, I'm sorry, corporal Munoz and Officer Earlywine, who have been recovering greatly. Officer Munoz is back and working with CID and getting moving, getting, getting back in the groove. And Officer Earlywine is doing great as well. I thank them for their service and we look forward to having them around the Castle Hills family for years to come. I believe Mr. Rafferty also has some, some information.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Gregory, if that is the case, we can start providing masks upon request for anybody who wants to attend a meeting or any ARC, BOA or zoning commission we have. On that fact, I, I'm in the process of finalizing correspondence to council on how we'll open up again to the public next week on a limited basis through the month of June and July, how we'll start operating our services here at city hall and how court will be run per Judge McCall. So I'll have that to you this week and we'll put out all the information we need to inform residents that we will be back open for services here at city hall.
Thank you, Mr. Rafferty. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. May. Second. Joyce, all in favor? Everybody have a good evening.